I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, February 22, 2022. We all love that date, don't we? Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Niznik.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Kitty said there's a delay in her audio. I see her up there, so.
I see her up there as well.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take Kitty as a visual. Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay, I'll take Kitty as a visual. Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, I'll take Kitty as a visual. Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, I'll take Kitty as a visual. Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you please?
Technical difficulties, hold on a minute. We'll try, I'll keep going and if it starts echoing again, we'll stop. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us electronically on BV22. We're glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the evening. Stacy moves.
Second.
Beth second, or Richard seconds. Laura, can you please call the roll on the motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Niznik.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Approve tonight's agenda.
Kitty, we can see you. If you could give us a thumbs up.
Gephardt, yes. Niznik, yes. Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yep.
Yes.
Approve tonight's agenda.
Sweeney Moran.
Kitty, we can see you if you could give us a thumbs up. Gephardt, yes. Niznik, yes. Raj Paul. Yes. Sargent.
Yep.
Yep. Approve tonight's.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
We'll keep moving ahead. We'll begin, as always, with the superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson, good evening.
Thank you, Board President Gephardt, board members. I think we're all just, hopefully that's the only time you hear me say that. It doesn't repeat, repeat a bunch of times. Want to, just a few updates this evening for the board and the public. We started our teacher roundtables again. For, for those in the public who heard us, or heard me talk about these prior to January's, January's surge, we were able to begin those again this past week. We visited Jamestown, Lafayette. Want to thank all of the educators at both schools. Again, just a great opportunity for us as, as a governance team.
Heard us, or heard me talk about these prior to January's, January's surge. We were able to begin those again this past week. We were visiting Jamestown, Lafayette. Want to thank all of the educators at both schools. Again, just a great opportunity for us as, as a governance team. Heard us, or heard me talk about these prior to January's surge. We were able to begin those again this past week. We were visiting Jamestown, Lafayette. Want to thank all of the educators at both schools.
So they were great.
Again, just a great opportunity for us.
I just really enjoy the opportunity to, to learn from our educators on the ground, sharing with us what's working and where we, we need to do a better job of providing the very best working conditions for them to be successful. And so appreciated the visit today and the visit last week in Jamestown. Board members, many of you were able to join us last week, but last Tuesday, we were able to, Boulder Tech was able to host an in-person open house. Wonderful event, about 500 people. And the result of that was an increase of 20% of applications for the programs at Boulder Tech. Great opportunity. There were some hands-on activities, taste of the career and technical op, the, there was just a hand-on, hands-on taste of the programming, including visiting all of the programs and seeing some of the, the really cool tools that we have over there to teach students, like the synthetic cadaver, which I know that many of you are, were able to see. And what was really, the students really took the lead on that visit, and so just wanted to highlight that. Wanted to thank our partners on, at Impact on Education. They've been supporting us throughout the pandemic, throughout the Marshall fires. They have been able to help secure funding to hire four additional mental health advocates to, to be deployed at our most impacted schools by the fire. Over $570,000. Wanted to send a special thank you to the Community Foundation's Boulder County Wildfire Fund. They were able to provide half of that funding. And these mental health advocates can be assigned to the seven schools most directly impacted by the Marshall Fire. These schools are home to sick, over 6,000 students, 687 of those who lost their homes or remain displaced. So we're just very, very thankful to Impact on Education and to Boulder Community Foundation. And then finally, want to send a huge congratulations to board member Stacy Zess, who last week was named by the Colorado Athletic Director Association as the Outstanding School Board Member of the Year. So round of applause to, for Stacy and all the work she's done in, in supporting athletics, working on our athletic review committee, both as a parent and as a board member. So thank you and congratulations, Stacy. And board members, unless something happens and you hear all that again, that's the end of my report.
Board members, any questions for Rob about his report? I just want to add my congratulations to you, Stacy. You've done an amazing job, and I think I learned recently that you continue to be the, you're still working the Monarch Team, even though your son no longer attends and is out of state, and you're still managing that team. So thank you for your commitment to sports at the high school level and to the community. So thank you very much. So the superintendent's report now will lead into a COVID update by the Boulder County Public Health and Broomfield Public Health.
At this point, I believe we're turning the presentation over to Stephanie Farren. Stephanie, take it away. Stephanie, if you'll unmute for us so we can hear you. We apologize for the technical difficulties. Trying to, to run some hybrid tonight is, is causing some issues. Kathy, should we take five so we can get this sorted out? Is that okay?
Of course. That's a good idea, Rob. So we'll take five minutes while we work on our technical difficulties and wait for Stephanie Farren to be able, I think she's logged in. We're having problems on our end. We're back in session, hopefully without the echo, and so I'm going to turn it back over to Rob, who I think will introduce Stephanie Farren. I think that's where we left off.
Yes, Stephanie, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
That's awesome. I'm going to go ahead and turn the presentation over to you at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. And I want to make sure that everyone can see the slides, COVID-19 update.
Yep, we can see them.
Good, great. Thank you so much. Good evening, President Gephardt, members of the board. Sorry about the little technical difficulty there. It is certainly a pleasure to finally be here and able to offer some encouraging updates in our COVID situation. I will share an update of our new COVID protocol that began this past February, this past Friday, February 18. And then I'll allow our public health partners to give a review also. As you probably all know, on Monday, February 14, the Board of Health voted to rescind public health orders. 2021-07 required all individuals age two and older to wear face covering while inside school buildings and childcare. It also required us to follow Boulder County Public Health School and Childcare guidance. The other order that was rescinded, 2021-08, required face coverings in certain indoor public settings. Still effective on Friday, February 18 at 5:00 p.m., masks were no longer required, but still are very welcome in all of our facilities. And then I'll also mention that we do still need masks on buses, as per federal orders. We're not sure when that order will be rescinded. Also on Friday, the 18th, CDPE announced some new COVID guidance for schools. Sorry. Oh, my slide. There we go. Announced some new COVID guidance for schools and childcare, and to begin us really transitioning into a routine disease control model. A routine disease control model focuses really more on a response to clusters of cases, outbreaks, and looking for evidence of ongoing transmission. It's less about individual case investigation, contact tracing, and quarantine. The model really closely resembles how we've traditionally managed communicable diseases. You know, in the school setting, our school nurses have always monitored and reported communicable diseases to, you know, our main office, our Health Services Department. And then we report them out to public health as required. And COVID-19 is a reportable disease and will continue to be a reportable condition. We then work with their staff in the public health departments to identify if there are outbreaks or clusters of disease, and then implement disease control responses to control and contain any spread. That is the same as we have done in the past for chicken pox or GI, you know, diseases, pertussis, other things like that. Now, this routine disease control model still relies on our layered mitigation practices to help keep COVID to a minimum in our schools. And of course, the most effective practice is to stay home if you're sick. We will continue sending our weekly reminders, and folks should have gotten those today, to do a kind of a self-check every morning. Make sure that you're, yourself, if you're a staff person, or your kiddos, if you have students, are not ill, and if they are ill, to keep them home. We also encourage COVID testing if symptoms are persisting, and we'll continue to offer testing at our mobile school sites in addition to our routine testing program. So like I mentioned, we will be keeping our layered health precautions in place in alignment with health, with CDC and CDPE. Everything stays in place except for the required masking. These mitigation efforts have proven to be effective in preventing spread, and they include disease surveillance, ventilation, the, you know, increased filtration and cleaning, regular reminders, like I mentioned before, and then, you know, practicing healthy habits, hand washing, respiratory etiquette, all of those things. And I've spoken to teachers today already who are doing that in their classrooms, reminding students, you know, to cough into their elbows and things like that when, you know, because they don't, if they don't have a mask on. Will continue to do physical distancing to the greatest extent possible and to maximize outdoor activities. Our health guidelines for family document has been updated, and we send it every Monday to all students and staff. It's also available on our website under COVID Resources, Health and Safety Precautions. It includes illness protocols, talks a little bit about masks that are welcome, not required. Isolation after a positive test is still required, and that we have discontinued quarantines in high-risk activities, as well as routine classrooms. There's also guidance on that page for families or staff who may require additional health measures, now that masking is optional, and ways that they can work with us, and we can work with them at the school setting to make sure that we are doing everything we can to keep their students safe. Also available on this page are links to vaccination opportunities and our ongoing testing program. Our routine testing is still being offered at our elementary, middle, and K-8 schools. That's happening every two weeks, along with symptomatic testing at those sites and at Centaurus High School. And I can tell you, in the last two weeks, we've done 3,800 unique individuals were tested. That testing took about an average of 40 hours to get results, and our in-school positivity rate from the schools that were tested over those last two weeks was 0.5%. So we really are doing a great job here and continue to see a significant decline in the number of cases. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that there are opportunities to have rapid tests delivered directly to your home. There is a COVID-19 Test at Home program through CDPE, and of course, the federal government now is offering tests that you can have delivered, and you can sign up for those through the United States Postal Service. Well, that is all that I have tonight, and I will turn this over to one of our partners in public health.
Thank you, Stephanie. I, I think that we're going to have Boulder County Public Health go first. Camille, are, are you available? Are you on the line?
I'm still looking for her. We're working on getting her the link.
Would you like me to start then? I can start from.
That would be wonderful.
Give me a second. Let me share my screen.
Rob, do you want to introduce Helene?
Thanks, Helene. We appreciate you being here this evening. Helene, who's from Broomfield Public Health, will now be giving us a COVID-19 update.
Hi, everybody. Nice to see you again. Thank you for the continued invitation. It's, it's nice to work with all our partners and as we kind of navigate these new waters in terms of how we continue to see COVID cases decrease. And so just want to give a few highlights and share that we, both myself and our, our medical director, Dr. Belkner, are here to answer questions if you guys have them after the presentation. So just some high-level information to share, as we've kind of shared all along this journey. So many of you are, I'm sure, familiar with the CDC map that just kind of gives a quick overview of what things look like in, in the nation, and everyone has been, you know, reeling through this Omicron surge that we've seen. And so we've, we've seen this all be read, and it's nice to see that we're starting to see the sprinkling of, of substantial and moderate and low transmissions throughout the states. So just to kind of dig a little deeper in that, in terms of just what, what have the cases looked like across this stretch of, of this two-year journey that we've been on, this is just a nice visual of just showing just how significant, you know, we hear that word unprecedented all the time, but the unprecedented number of cases that we all are, you know, kind of working through, through this last month and a month and a half or so. And this, this gives a nice visual of just how significant higher those cases were. And it really does actually give a nice snapshot of just how many more cases we've seen in children, and just how that kind of differs from throughout this whole COVID journey, when we've been tracking cases. And to just look a little closer at the number of children that have had COVID, this, again, just gives a, a nice indication of how, when we peaked, kind of that, you know, mid, mid end of January, this is raised a little bit from state to state, but this is an overall snapshot with the U.S. And thankfully, we're all seeing this significant drop after drop each week of the cases. And so looking at the, you know, what is, what's it been looking like in Colorado? Again, it mirrors what we were seeing in the nation as well, in terms of that steep, steep uptick and, you know, big, big drop that we've seen coming back. So we're averaging around 21 cases per 100,000 over this last week. And then looking at just the map overall, you know, that continued improvement. So we've seen the, the number of cases decline Broomfield. If you recall, call the, this is the color schemes that we kind of look at, the 110 case incidences where Broomfield's at, there's many metro counties that are even getting to that blue lower level transmission of just, of under 100. So that is all in the right direction that we'd like to see everything moving. And just as a quick look at our, at our positivity rate, we, you know, also been seeing that trending down as well, so looking at, in and around 6%. After the holiday weekend, there's always a little bit of nuance with testing and reporting, but we're, you know, trending down in the right direction as well. And we see it in our wastewater data collection as well. I know I shared about this last time, and I think this will be an excellent tool as we move forward in terms of continuing to watch for any, any increases in, in wastewater, you know, through, at the community level, at a statewide level, nationwide level. This will be a tool that will utilize much going forward in terms of how this future state of, you know, endemic and living with COVID looks like. And, and in terms of all of this, just kind of tying it all together, we, we've seen, you know, excellent vaccination uptake, and we've also seen a lot of people also, unfortunately, get COVID over the, from this Omicron variant in particular. With that, you know, gives us a lot more protection across the board, and so we're seeing a, a big decrease in terms of concerns of severe disease, which has helped kind of tie in letting go of some of those restrictions in terms of mask requirements and such. And so it all kind of ties together in terms of this overall hope that we're, we're seeing in terms of protection, ongoing protection, hopefully through, through spring, through even, you know, the beginning of summer, depending on what variants and other unknowns, COVID has shown us all along. And so just overall trends, just kind of tying together the things that I just shared, we, you know, just overall continued decline in hospitalization, continued decline in infection. We expect that to continue as the weeks go, go forward. We have estimates of, in and around the realm of 90% of Coloradans being immune to Omicron, and that protection will carry on for, for many, many months to help in terms of overall. But we, but don't forget that there are still new people getting COVID, and so it's still important to continue those mitigation efforts because we still see about 1 in 69, 70 Coloradans is currently infected. So we are still getting ongoing positive cases. It's just at a much, much more manageable lower rate. And that, that immunity, whether it's a vaccine-inquired, immune-infection-inquired, it will, you know, will continue to, to wait, to fade over the time. So much work is still needed to continue with ongoing vaccine boosters and getting others vaccinated that maybe haven't, haven't received their vaccine yet. There's a lot of unknowns, and that's hard and uncomfortable, but unknowns in terms of timing, of, and unknowns of future variants, of, of other timelines of vaccines rollout and booster timeline and such. So many, many more things will still keep evolving, and we'll keep working with our partners at BVSD and, and Boulder County Public Health. And we continue, as CDPE continues, to still encourage mask wearing for indoors or in any other high-risk areas as one piece of that layered mitigation. And we're hopeful, we're hopeful that this next few months, we will continue to feel that relief a bit, and hopefully things kind of shift more to this routine disease control that Stephanie shared. And just to give a highlight of our, I've shared this, you know, graph before, so just overall, we're continuing our efforts in terms of our vaccination, COVID vaccine efforts for, for, for first time and/or for boosters. We have over 75% of our total population is vaccinated and still working on helping get, everyone get up to date if they're eligible for a booster, so ongoing work there, as well as ongoing work with reaching our, any populations that maybe have like harder access to clinics, so just ongoing outreach and health equity clinics. And, and as well as just awaiting that approval for the under-five-year-old vaccine, which is likely to be more like an end of April, beginning of May, to have that roll out. Last time I know, I shared, you know, we all, we all are tired of COVID. We all are yearning for more normalcy, so I just wanted to include some of these resources. Again, we, we know and recognize that it's been a hard, hard time for a lot of folks, adults and kids across the board, and we've seen more, you know, just more anxiety, more depressed, depression. And so I just wanted to share some of the links, which would be available for resources, and just recognize that that is, that is ongoing work that we, we all want to continue to support. And, and again, just emphasize, we, we talked about this layered mitigation. It's such a, it's such a whole part of it, and really what we are looking at to the future is really utilizing those at-home tests. So I included in here the links just to make sure everyone's aware that families and schools and individual schools and such can order free rapid at-home tests, as well as just continue that awareness of the free COVID vaccine sites and clinics that are out there. It's a, it's, it's, all of it helps us all return to normalcy, to function in, in what this endemic landscape looks like and, and keeps everybody hopefully healthy and safe as we move forward. And more of our information can be found at our website, and we thank you again for the ongoing partnership, and happy to answer questions. And I will stop sharing my screen.
Thanks, Helene. Board members, are there any questions for Helene? We just really appreciate you coming and sharing with us every time we ask you to be there, and I think it's really helpful for our community. So thanks so much. Really appreciate it. And yeah, hopefully, fingers crossed, we can continue to have good news for all of us, because as I look out, I was talking to some of our new board members, and they're like, we had no idea what some of our staff looked like because we've all, and I'm sure that feeling is going across schools and across communities right now. So it's a, it's a nice feeling, and hopefully we'll continue to get good news. So, thank you. So do we have?
Yep, I believe at this point, we'll turn the presentation over to Camille Rodriguez, Executive Director for Boulder County Public Health. Camille, are you with us?
Yes, thank you. I think that's your voice, Dr. Anderson, and this is Camille Rodriguez, Executive Director of Boulder County Public Health. I'm going to put your staff on the spot. I emailed my presentation to Randy. I don't know, Randy, if you're able to throw it up on the screen for me. I would so appreciate it. And while I'm waiting to see if you can do that, I, I appreciate this opportunity to give the board. to give the board an update on probably some of the same of what Helene just provided, but also some of the rationale for the Boulder County Board of Health decision of last Monday night, which stood down both of our public health orders, which one, of course, was the order related to school children ages two through grade 12 and all school staff on school grounds, et cetera, and then the indoor universal masking order, regardless of vaccination status. So until Randy's able, if he can, to share that with you, I'll just keep sharing that. Part of our focus was definitely the recommendation made by staff to the board to consider all of these inflection points, kind of what Helene was mentioning. There are so many bits of information that we leaned on to make that decision, which included a higher-level strategy for the endemicity piece of this. And so, you know, I think supporting the community to create protective habits was what our original order intended to do. And yes, I'm on that strategy slide. Thank you so much. And it was important for us then to respond to the data at hand and to keep the focus on procuring not only what we did with those habits in the first place, which was the layered mitigation strategies, as Helene mentioned, but then also when the order stood down, the hope that some recommendations to continue some of those good behaviors would be a part of our daily habits. Next slide, please, if you can scroll down. I want to share with the board, you know, some of the spaces where we knew it was time to recommend to the Board of Health that things change, but we still have cautions. I think Helene mentioned this to you, you know, we're very excited that the numbers are getting better, but we also know that we need to definitely keep adjusting and keep watching for our community just to at least keep you informed and to keep pressing on those good layered mitigation strategies that we all learned throughout this pandemic. You know, we know that our communities are highly vaccinated. That was definitely one of the key decision points for us. Also, the treatments that have now been developed for practically all ages, I will say six months old and up, have access to treatment. We also know we need to be cautious because sometimes the supply chain can be our worst enemy. Sometimes it takes several months for us to get a significant number of doses for this community, but we still provided that consideration to the Board of Health. We also knew the science taught us that Omicron produces less severe disease. Now, we don't know what the long-term impacts of this disease will have on our community, but this was definitely a consideration. And also that children do experience less severe disease. Just this week, the most updated data for Boulder County included 13 pediatric hospitalizations. Last week alone, it was 30, three zero. So the numbers are definitely going down. Next slide down, please. So Helene mentioned this, we're moving from an emergency, a crisis, where we needed to put orders in place to protect and promote health to a space where regular infection control measures are back in place, are the norm. We went from risk avoidance and harm prevention now to risk management and harm reduction. And all of the places and spaces where public health orders required masking, required in some way, shape, or form, especially in the school order, in the school guidance, you know, quarantine and isolation, now those layered mitigation strategies are strongly recommended and more in line with just regular disease management protocols. Next slide, please. So we've been calling this an inflection point at Boulder County Public Health, and why? Well, you know, the projections, as Helene mentioned, are positive. Not only are we seeing a reduction in the number of cases, but just the projections for the community, for our state, and even for the nation are looking positive. You know, we are cognizant, again, I will say, of the widely available treatment of vaccine. And we are still, you know, finding pockets of individuals in our community who have yet to have their first dose, but it's very, very invigorating when we look at our data, and I bet Helene does this too, when we see many, many people each week getting their first dose. And so we know that our strategies of providing that type of communication, either through social media or through visits to radio stations or just in these moments promoting vaccine uptake is making a difference. And we know that effective treatments are available. We know that people can better protect themselves even through the availability of the free masking programs and then all of us continuing to reiterate the importance of the layered mitigation strategies, even and especially when we remain in high transmission, even when I've said that Omicron does, you know, cause less hospitalization. It still causes hospitalization and death, and/or we are still seeing deaths in folks in our community. And so it's not time to get completely relaxed, but it is definitely time to incorporate our own personal strategies in what makes sense for us. Next slide, please. So I bet Helene went over this, and I'm sorry that I came in late. I was having some technical difficulties, but I wanted to share some of the most up-to-date information. You're getting this ahead of a lot of our partners. This just came from our surveillance team tonight. The way the CDC tracks cases, many of our counties, as you will see, are in red and experiencing high transmission, but we're happy to note that, I think it's Lake County there is in low transmission, and then several counties are in moderate and even some in substantial. It's good news. We're seeing downward movement. If you're concerned about some of the upticks or zero information on some of those counties, don't be too concerned. It's a statistical significance issue. We just don't see a lot of cases coming in grand, and that's why you saw that high uptake. Next slide, please. This I just wanted to share because I'd like to note that we only had 147 cases per 100,000 this week to report to you. At our highest during the Omicron surge, we were at 2,029.8. So it is a relief to this community. It's a relief to all of the healthcare staff in schools and in hospitals and in public health who do the work of serving and supporting our community in all the ways that they do to see this downturn. It's really excellent. Next slide. Our positivity rate, for the first time in a long time in Boulder County, is below 5%. And I'll say that, I'll do a little bragging. I don't want to be competitive here, but there are several of us, Denver, Boulder, and Jefferson County are all below 5%. The average for the state today is about 5.81%, and so we're trending a little lower than the state, and I think that's also very excellent. Next slide. Lastly, I want to share with you that as of today, there are 25 people hospitalized in Boulder County with COVID-19. So this is still in our community. This is still something that I want everyone to be aware of and be concerned. We do have 18 staff ICU beds available, and that is an improvement. And the seven-day average, as you can see from my slide, of confirmed COVID-19 patients did decrease by 32%, and this is a regional number. So it's not statewide, but, and it's not just Boulder County, but that last bullet point is a regional number. And so I did a very, very quick overview for you of why we recommended as Boulder County staff to the Board of Health to stand down those two orders, why we still are cautionary in some of our spaces like hospitalization. That's a delicate thing to balance, but that we also issued, you should know, a public health advisory on Friday at 5:00 to really focus in on some of those areas where we felt we could make recommendations to our community, such as, you know, using a smugly-fit KN95 mask, and those are readily available now, especially if you're going to go visit a family member who's immunocompromised or someone who lives in a long-term care facility. And even then, you might want to get tested before you go because testing kits are also readily available. So those are some of the reasons why, at least for now, we want to keep an advisory out there for you to lean on, for us to lean on, and that will hopefully also come off the books and will be free and clear of orders and advisories, but still as a community, pulling together to use those layered mitigation strategies if public health professionals ever have to come back to the community and say, hey, cases are going up again. Let's put on those masks. Let's do all the things that we learned over these last two years. So lastly, I'll say thank you to the school board for all of your support, to public health. We continue to be ready, at the ready, to provide guidance and information to you at your risk. I just thank Stephanie and Helene too for all of their collaboration, and thank you for this opportunity to share, and I'd be happy also to answer questions.
Thanks very much. That was very helpful and very informative. Board members, questions? I know Kitty has some questions, so we're going to see if we can make that work. So Kitty, I know there's a delay, so I'm just going to wait, and I'm hoping you're hearing me, and you can ask your questions.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, it's, excuse me, never mind about the delay. What I'm concerned about is long COVID, and especially in children. And I know, you know, your slide said the science is still developing, but is there anything we know about who may be at greater risk? Whether children are at the same amount of risk as adults or just, I don't know what to ask. I just want to know everything that we actually know about it now because it's very concerning to me that we could have kids who get COVID and have some consequences for the rest of their lives.
If I may call you Kitty. I hope that's okay. Thank you. It's Camille. I don't know if Helene or Stephanie have more solid answers than I. What I will commit to is to getting back to the board with an answer. I did not bring our chief medical officer here tonight. We've been spread out to a number of other meetings, but it is developing. I don't, I haven't been advised in particular on, you know, a child that might have comorbidities or a child with an intellectual disability. Are they more susceptible? I do not know. And I think that, you know, these are the areas where we do remain concerned, which is why I indicated it on the slide. I'm concerned about any age group, but in particular, children, of course. And especially, what I didn't note in my presentation, Kitty, is that, you know, and Helene mentioned this, there is still a part of our population that is not eligible for vaccination. I asked my staff how many children that is, and it's around 13,000 or 14,000 just in Boulder County. So we have a lot of work to do yet, and I do commit, unless Helene and Stephanie have all these studies at their fingertips, and I didn't get that information ahead of the meeting, but I do commit to following up with you to see what our staff at Boulder County Public Health, and especially our chief medical officer, might have to provide. But I'll lob it over to them if they have any other insights, and thank you for that great question, and I will get back to you. Thanks.
Hey, Camille, it's Bob Belknap. So I'm actually on the call today, so.
Well, thanks, Bob. That's awesome. Go for it.
I'm the chief medical officer for Broomfield and work closely with Boulder's chief medical officer, Dr. Haas. So it's a great question, and the, really, the short answer and the right answer is that it is still an evolving area. Children, much like with symptomatic and severe COVID, do appear less risk, at risk for long COVID. One of the challenges is there's not a, there's not a single clear, you know, test to say if someone has long COVID. The symptoms that have been attributed to it are pretty broad. And so that makes it challenging to say, you know, if someone, if someone truly has that. So it's not an easy thing to pinpoint. But I will say that one of the concerns, I think, more than long COVID are the mental health challenges that children in particular are now facing after two years of disruptions in their lives, in all of our lives, and the, you know, the impact that that has had. And so I believe that the evidence does show that the mental health effects are, at this point, probably more widespread and prevalent than long COVID. And so to the degree that we can begin addressing that, and hopefully with the levels of immunity that we're seeing, this transition into, you know, more normalcy will continue. One of the most encouraging pieces of evidence in my mind is that the fact that the vaccine, which was based on the original variant of COVID, has really remained remarkably effective against, as these new variants have come out, Delta and Omicron, you know, before that Beta. What we've seen is even though people, breakthrough infections occur, and the reality is what we know about coronaviruses, it's like those are likely to continue, but protection against severe disease, hospitalization, and death has really been mostly maintained. We know some waning, but the vaccine effectiveness has really been quite high. So that encourages me that even with future variants, we aren't going to see the strain on the healthcare system and the degree of illness that we've seen, you know, over the last two years.
Thanks.
The importance of the mitigation work continuing, while it sometimes feels like in January, everybody got COVID. That's not true, and so we really want to still keep doing all the efforts to prevent other people from getting COVID. There's a lot of unknowns. We don't know about long haulers. There's some estimates of, you know, 1 in 3 people may develop something. And so everything that we've learned along this journey, as Camille shared, let's continue to do that. Stay home if you're sick. Please seek, please seek out testing. There's going to be so much at-home test kits available. Please utilize them. As Stephanie and Camille shared, you know, just being thoughtful of if you are going to be going to see some family member, if, you know, if you wake up and you're just not feeling that great, you know, definitely utilize those at-home tests. Think about, you know, kind of any exposures you had. And there, you know, isolation, there's an infectious period, so please, you know, utilize a mask, stay home, those types of things to prevent the spread. There's a lot we're still learning and more, you know, more that we don't know on the forefront to hopefully prevent long haul because it definitely, it's a mystery. There's a lot of different symptoms, symptomology for different folks.
Thanks. Kitty, anything else?
No, thanks.
All right. No other questions from board members? Thanks again to everybody, to Stephanie and Helene and to Camille. We really appreciate you being here tonight, and I know our public also really appreciates hearing the, kind of the science behind all of your decisions, and we look forward to our continued relationship. So we will now move on to our public participation. Members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's meeting were asked to sign up prior to noon today by submitting the request to speak during public participation form that can be found on the BVSD website or by contacting the Board Secretary Laura Schaefer. Public participants will join and present their comments via Zoom. The Board respects the rights of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of the schools. We believe that public comments that are critical of district staff, however, often cause unnecessary harm to those employees and to the education of our students. As a result, we prefer that members of the public share any criticisms of employees in writing with the superintendent, who is responsible for supervising all staff and then involving the board. then involving the board as necessary. If you choose instead to address a personnel issue publicly, please understand that the board does not endorse the comments of any speaker, and reminds all who speak that they assume the risk of legal action by district employees in the event of the affected employees believe that any comments about them violate legal standards. To ensure that the meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first. We have very few speakers tonight, so this won't be an issue. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, which we will not, public comment would continue at the end of the meeting. If you run out of time or would like to share additional information, you may email the board. And recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that's unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. You will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds, you will see the orange card. Please wrap up your comments. At the end of your two minutes, a timer will sound and your microphone will be muted. We have a full lineup tonight, so we ask that you please self-monitor your time. We'll begin with our student speakers. And I believe we have Nick Tanner, who was given two minutes by Ezekiel Johnson Mensimer.
Hello, my name is Nick Tanner. I'm a senior at Fairview High School, and I'm here to talk about the recent dropping of the mask mandate. First of all, I'm not advocating for the mask mandate to be put back in elementary schools. I understand that they are at low risk of COVID transmission and that masks have an adverse effect on my mental health. I am talking only about high schools, as that is my periphery. However, a study in Wisconsin showed that high schools that require masks have a 37% lower incidence of COVID. Another study in Utah found that high levels of mask wearing in high schools kept rates of in-school spread at less than 1%. A study of high school seniors and juniors found that students who wear masks report less levels of anxiety, with levels decreasing as the knowledge of proper mask protocols went up. Along with that, Boulder County is still reporting more than 200 cases per 100,000 people. Sorry, my parents are yelling in the background. More than 200 cases per 100,000 people, which might, based off of Camille's data, be a little incorrect, a little outdated, but it's still well above the high transmission level of 100 cases. Boulder County is only 73% vaccinated, with those aged 15 to 17 being only 87% vaccinated, those aged 18 and 19 being only 70% vaccinated. This is below the level of 95%, which a lot of experts agree is needed for her immunity for COVID. These figures also do not count for the booster, which considering the main variant being spread right now in Colorado, is Omicron is a rather necessary precaution, as the first two vaccination shots don't work quite as well as the booster does. The reason our cases are going down is because of the precautions we've been taking, and if they're away now, we're still in the red zone, is reckless. There's a new variant in Colorado, BA2, which is a variation of Omicron that has been found to be 30% more contagious, resistant to antibodies from previous bouts of COVID, resistant to antibody treatments that are the most common way hospitals are treating COVID right now, and might be more severe. However, the data isn't completely conclusive in that area. Outside of facts and figures, I'm also terrified. I had a panic attack at school today, my first, my first one in over a year, because of how stressed I was about the lack of mask wearing among my peers. I have immunocompromised friends, and I'm scared for them. I'm scared to go to school. A lot of them can't do online school, as they want to take IV or AP classes, because just because they're immunocompromised doesn't mean that their education should be put at risk. Taking all of these things into account is irresponsible to be dropping the mask mandate right now, by dropping that you are saying that COVID is no longer a threat and you are letting me and my peers down. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anne Marie McDonald, who is not here. We'll circle back around at the end and see if Anne Marie comes back on. Next, we have Samir Brenn, also not here. Vadim Yuzdinsky.
Hello, I'm Vadim Yuzdinsky. I'm also a senior at Fairview High School, and I also want to speak in favor of reinstating the mask mandate. This is, you know, for several reasons. First of all, I understand that there is some pressure, there has been some pressure from parents to remove them, and while this is sort of understandable, I think that the purported and I would say not really scientifically supported arguments against mask mandates do not outweigh the arguments in favor of mask mandates, especially in high schools. Firstly, we should, you know, acknowledge that mask wearing is not very difficult at all. I mean, we wear, you know, hats, scarves, and scot outside, we wear underwear, sorry. So, you know, it's, I think it's very normal that, you know, some clothing, you know, minimum standards, you know, should be required in society. And, you know, when you have airborne diseases like what we have right now, that's, I think very justified to expect. So I think that there's just no serious downside to reinstating mask mandates in schools, and I think that it would significantly decrease cases, significantly decrease deaths. And in addition, although I am comforted by, you know, the statistics of cases going down, that's only good in the context of what we've just been through, right? So, you know, it's still very high, there are still very high death rates compared to what there usually is. And quite frankly, every time before, when the wave has subsided and they've let our guard down, like now, a new variant has just come up and, you know, made everything worse again. So I think that we should definitely keep our vigilance up, keep the mask mandate on. Yes, and finally, if I just want to ask you to do this, some of my classmates said that you don't really care about what students think, and I want you to prove them wrong.
Thank you. Because we didn't understand the last part of what he said. Could he just repeat that last part?
Yes, so I wanted to say that, you know, there are classmates who are a lot more eloquent than me who support the mask mandate, and when I approached them to ask them to speak to you here, they refused because they said it would be a waste of time, because they think that you don't care about them as much as you should, and I don't want to believe that. I think that you should, you know, show that you care about us.
All right. Thanks for, it was just a little garbled, the last part, so I appreciate you hanging in there and repeating that for us. Okay. Our last speaker tonight is Lori Albright.
There we go. Hi, I'm Lori Albright, and I'm glad to be able to speak to you tonight about the transgender policy, which is on your agenda tonight. I was on the school board 10 years ago when the board passed the transgender policy. It was in addition to the strong non-discrimination policy that was already in place, but it was time for an upgrade. Bruce Messenger brought the policy to the board in response to requests from the community and staff to provide protections for people in the LGBTQ, and especially the transgender community. As is often the case, the board was responsive to the community needs, and we approved the policy. The primary mission of Boulder Valley School District is to educate students, and in order to do this, and to do this effectively, all students and all staff must feel safe and welcomed. This policy was approved as one important way that BVSD could ensure that everyone feels safe and validated in our schools. It's important that institutions and organizations stand up for positive values. I'm proud of what we did 10 years ago, and I'm really pleased to see that this board is celebrating this important milestone. Let's continue to ensure that we have strong safeguards in place that value each person, regardless of their individual characteristics. Thanks for the opportunity to comment tonight. It's a pleasure to be back talking with the BVSD school board. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. So I'll circle back, are either Anne Marie or Samir, have they, they're not? This concludes our public participation. We appreciate hearing from our speakers this evening, and we'll now move on to board communication. So I'm going to start with Kitty, just so that if there's issues, we can try to work those out. So Kitty, do you have anything for board communication?
Yes, I do. I would like to ask Vadim to tell his friends that we care about students more than anything else. That's why we're here, because we care so much about our students, and I'm so sorry to hear that some don't think we do. Just because we might not do everything a student asks us to do does not mean that we are not putting their learning and their welfare at the forefront of everything we do.
Thanks, Kitty. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Board comment, anyone else want to?
I'm, yeah, I just want to start out by thanking our partners in public health. I really appreciate your thoughtful consideration and your leadership and collaboration during this, during this time. I also want to echo what Kitty just said and thank our students, Nick and Vadim, especially for speaking up tonight during public commentary. I appreciate all of the comments from, from anyone that calls in or presents to our board. We really do appreciate you taking the time to provide input. And then I know we're going to be talking about the transgender policy, but I'm really proud to be part of a board that was on the forefront of such a policy. And maybe it goes without saying, but I think it bears repeating, that it was important then, and it's certainly important now, that students feel seen and heard and are able to be included in our schools. And then lastly, I just wanted to share that I had the opportunity to visit Lewisville Elementary School this past week with Lisa and Kathy as well, and we got to see some amazing thinking from some of our second grade students. They shared their published service announcements with Congressman Nagus, and it was just a great experience. They have incredible ideas, and I left feeling very uplifted and full of hope, and they asked him some really great questions as well. So that's it for me.
I think it's been covered.
Okay.
We're going to have a chance to talk about transgender.
True. I just want to say thank you to our speakers as well. Lori, it was really nice hearing your voice, and it's just an honor to be able to, we all stand on the shoulders of others, and we are standing on the shoulders of some very strong and forward-thinking board members who brought this policy forward, and we can talk about it a little more when it shows up on the agenda, but I just wanted to say thank you for that. And yes, I was at the event with you, Beth, and with Lisa, and the teachers and the students in the whole event was really awe-inspiring. It was around environmental climate change and the ideas that they had that were concrete ideas about what we could be doing at the second grade level was inspiring to those of us who think about these issues all the time, but they're the ones who are going to have to be living it and enacting those changes. So, and Congressman Nagus was as great as always, answering questions from how old are you and where do you live, to what do you do as a congressman, which I thought was really insightful. So, and then really quickly, I just have a fun story to share. I was able to judge National History Day at Southern Hills Wednesday and Thursday, and then some of you may remember, it was all virtual, and we had a late start date on Thursday, which kind of threw the entire schedule into a little bit of an upside-down schedule. And so the teachers got everything back to us, everything was organized, and our first student came on, and he was very nervous, and he was there in his shirt and tie, and he did an awesome job. And then the teacher came on, and he was just wearing a white t-shirt, and it turns out that the student wasn't ready to go at 10 o'clock in the morning, so the teacher gave him his shirt and tie so the student could feel comfortable doing his presentation. So I'd just like to share that because it just kind of shows the, kind of above and beyond, and literally giving the student the shirt off his back so that he would feel comfortable in doing his NHD presentation. And I'm always in awe of the quality of the presentations that these students do. The conversation was around debate, and it was really, really very thoughtful, and I was a history major, and I always learn things when I listen to the students at the NHD presentation. So, so that's all I have, and I think we will now move on to Kim Bluman and our presentation on early childhood.
Good evening, President Gebhardt, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. I'm Robin Fernandez, the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, and I am thrilled to be here with you this evening to share information about the experiences and supports that our youngest learners in the district receive in our schools. So to that end, with me this evening is Kim Bluman, our Executive Director of Early Childhood, and she is going to share the information with you.
Thank you, Robin. Members of the board, let me get this up here. All right. Tonight I want to talk to you about the great work that's happening in our early childhood education department. I'm going to talk to you about three different focus areas tonight: school readiness, preschool, and kindergarten. The first area we're going to talk about is school readiness. I like to get, I really want you all to be thinking about how critical the early years are, and thinking about the impact of early childhood education. We know that 90% of a child's brain is developed by age five, so you can see that this is an incredibly critical time in the life of a young child. In the early years, children learn how to make friends, solve problems, are introduced to pre-literacy and pre-mathematic skills. We also know that social-emotional development in the early years is a strong indicator of later academic success. In fact, research shows only 40% of students enter kindergarten with strong social-emotional skills. So when we think about social-emotional learning, we always think that we have to explicitly teach literacy skills, which we do, but we also have to explicitly teach those social-emotional skills as well, and that's a big part of the work that we do in preschool and kindergarten. BVSD focuses on providing access for all early learners, so I really want to take an opportunity to highlight some exciting things that have happened. We have full-day kindergarten in BVSD, and we implemented that in 2019, 2020 school year, and we also have a program called Colorado Preschool Program, and that is a free preschool program for our most vulnerable students, and they can access half-day or full-day preschool. And so we've been recipients of Colorado Preschool Program since 1992. So, you know, it's been around for quite a few years. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank our community for supporting early learning. In 2010, we passed a very large mill levy to support preschool and kindergarten, and then in 2014, you know, BVSD was very forward-thinking in preparing and making sure we had preschool and kindergarten learning spaces, so we were ready when full-day kindergarten came. We were ready when opportunities for universal preschool was coming our way, which actually is coming in the next 16 months. So next, I'm going to highlight preschool. BVSD provides a high-quality, developmentally appropriate, inclusive preschool program for three- to five-year-olds. We are located in 19 elementary schools and the Mapleton Early Childhood Center. As of last week, which actually we have a few more that have come in over the last week, we have about 944 preschool children in our inclusive half-day preschool program that operates four days a week for three hours each day. Our Colorado Preschool Program, again, our free preschool, our CPP, we have 479 enrollment slots. Special education, we have about 266, and tuition, we have 199. I'm really proud to say that BVSD was one of a handful of school districts that filled every one of our state-funded preschool seats, and we were actually recognized by the Colorado Department of Ed, and that really has been to the amazing work that our community liaisons and our staff are doing out in the, out in the schools, because we had to think about different ways to reach families to let them know about our program during the pandemic. We also partner with We also partner with six private childcare preschools and we give 113 Colorado Preschool Program enrollment slots out to private providers. Many of these private providers we've been partnering with since 1992 and they've been longstanding significant partners for us. And we also have preschool enrichment, which is offered at six BVSD locations. And that has operated through our community schools department. Next, I want to talk about universal preschool. I'm sure you've heard in the media some information about Prop EE, universal preschool legislation passed in November of 2020. And this essentially gives free preschool for 10 hours a week for all four-year-olds in the state of Colorado. This actually begins July 1st of 2023. And what I'm really excited to share is this has really kind of evolved over the last couple of months. But we will actually, we didn't think we were going to get an enrollment slot allocation. So we're excited, you know, because with our Colorado Preschool Program, we get those 479 slots. And so we're excited to hear that there'll actually be a slot allocation as this all moves forward in July of 2023. In addition, our Governor Polis has brought on a new Department of Early Childhood Education and that legislation passed last spring. And that new department will begin this July 1st of 2022. So they have a full year to try to get universal preschool up and going. So we're ready to operate that in July of 2023. There's some areas, I will say, both Teresa, our ECE Director, and myself have been very involved at the state level around universal preschool the last 15 to 16 months. And we have been continuing to look at some different areas that we really want to make sure we watch and advocate for as we think about the different programming we operate here in our school district. One is special education programming. Universal Preschool says that we will offer all preschool in a mixed delivery model, which could be in a public school district setting, licensed childcare setting or licensed private childcare center. So we're kind of watching to see what happens with the legislation around special education. We're also really watching closely the funding because universal preschool or CPP will kind of blend together with the new universal preschool and that won't be funded through the School Finance Act. That will actually move to a new funding model that will happen through the new Department of Early Childhood. We aren't sure exactly what that's going to look like. We know that a new bill will be coming out in the next two to four weeks with more detail. We also really want to make sure we advocate for our three-year-olds. You know, BVSD serves, you know, quite a few hundred at-risk three-year-olds and we want to make sure that that funding continues for them. And then also the state has identified what they're calling a local lead process. So they want community members to come together and talk about who would be the person that would oversee universal preschool in your local community? It could be a county agency, a new agency, an early childhood council. It could be a school district. But the whole idea is that the community comes together to help define who is that local lead for that community. So we haven't seen any information yet about how that process will come together. We know that the Governor's Office is creating a toolkit and so we're waiting for that information so we can start to work with our local community agencies to talk about what that would look like for Boulder County. Next, I wanted to share, remember, if we're talking about the first five years are the most important years in a child's life. I just wanted to share some three and four-year-old data. When you look in the the light blue, you'll see how students enter. So we're looking at different developmental and academic skills. So that's their kind of growth percentile. And then the darker blue is how they end that school year in their their age band. So you can see kids are making incredible growth in our early childhood. This is actually preschool data, we have it for kindergarten as well. But and we see some of the same trends. And so we're seeing some some pretty great outcomes for our kids in our BVSD programs. Next, I want to talk a little bit about kindergarten. I had to show this great picture of Governor Polis in our kindergarten classrooms. As we said, in the 2019, 2020 school year, we implemented full day kindergarten. Prior to that, we had only had full day kindergarten in our title schools and we implemented it in all 31 schools. And so we continue to work and refine through that process. You know, I do want to remind us all that six months into implementation of full day kindergarten, we we had a pandemic. And so a lot of things have happened since the implementation of this program. But there's really incredible work going on in every single one of these classrooms. And again, I cannot thank the board or the community enough for the amazing materials. I mean, we got we got dollars to be able to create the most amazing, high-quality, center-based learning environments in our kindergarten classrooms, which is really exciting. And I hear from a lot of my colleagues, they tell me how lucky we are because they are struggling to find space and materials and we have these wonderful materials in our classrooms. Next, you probably see you have, I think Laura shared them with you. We have a suite of early childhood materials. She'll see all the way from the left is our talk, you know, play read book. And that's for students coming in through preschool, all the way to the other side, which is a full day kindergarten research or resource, talking about research and what our instructional model looks like. We also have a digital kindergarten family handbook link. We created a BVSD website at bvsd.org backslash spark. So any of our community members who are watching, they can click this in the board docs and it will take you to an incredible amount of videos from our kindergarten teachers and resources for families about preschool, all the way to kindergarten. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you may have for me.
Kitty, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Stacy?
Yeah, thank you for all that information. I have never really understood this, so I'm hoping you could help me about what that slot allocation thing is. So I understand about the it's the CPP program, but you said you also got a slot allocation for the new program. So I don't understand, does that mean that not everyone who wants to come can come? Can you kind of explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so currently we have Colorado Preschool Program and those 479 is what we have right now. We don't know what our slot allocation is going to be for July 2023. We're hoping it's similar and we've been continuing to advocate for that. But what will happen is that Proposition EE money and Colorado Preschool Program, the Governor's Office is recommending blending all of that together for one set of preschool funds. And so whether you're a home-based provider, a school district, a private provider, we would all get a slot allocation and they'll look at it based on community need. So I'm guessing we would trend, we have data to show what the need is in our community. So we're hoping to see similar slot allocation with the new funding model in 2023.
And Colorado preschool program slots are for students that are deemed at risk by a certain they meet a certain criteria, correct?
So that these new slots won't, correct? Like this is what I don't understand and.
Yes, so it's kind of a combo. So there will be the four-year-olds, what doesn't matter if you are what we would consider are underserved or at risk for accessing high-quality programming or whether you're over income. Any four-year-old, no matter your income, can qualify for 10 hours of free preschool. We don't know the piece for three-year-olds and that's the piece that we continue to watch and advocate for because we know that that's a population that needs our services in our community.
Right, thank you. I appreciate it.
It is confusing.
Yeah, thank you.
Lisa?
I don't have a question, I just want to express enthusiasm for for all of this. My oldest is in second grade, so he was there for the first year of free kindergarten. I've got another kindergartner now and it just makes an amazing difference. I only had them in preschool two or three days a week before then, so it was all we could afford. So getting full day kindergarten was just just a godsend. And right now with my daughter too, she's working, my kindergartner, she's working with an early interventionist on her reading. And I think that'll get her on track for first grade. And that's something else that I can imagine would have been so much more difficult for her to sort of deal with and and get that kind of help without this programming. So just huge thanks to all of you for everything you've done for my kids, for all the kids across the district. It's amazing.
Nicole?
What capacity or ability do we have to expand our preschool offerings for tuition-based families that might be interested in participating in preschool with us and paying a tuition now and kind of looking forward as Proposition EE unfolds?
Yeah, so currently, right now, we, I think we would access more families if we had more full day options. And so we've been partnering with community schools too. We've been piloting some different options to look at how we can provide wraparound services. And so with Proposition EE, we all know that 10 hours of preschool is not enough for a family who's trying to go to work or school. So another component of that is then, how do you fill the rest of that week? And so what they're envisioning is some kind of sliding scale, although they haven't shared all the details around that, but trying to think about how do you give a full week of services for a family? So we're hoping that there's more detail in this current legislation bill that's going to be coming out in the next couple of weeks.
And as a district, a big part of our ability to transition to full day kindergarten is we had the KEE program and we had the physical space in the in the rooms already for those kindergartners to then be there full day. That's a sort of a piggyback, thinking about capacity and space for potential increase in enrollees in preschool. And what does that look like in our district right now?
So what I can say is that we took a lot of spaces when we implemented full day K. And in some of our buildings, we actually have preschool capacity in all of our buildings. It's just what we what we see is East County has more need than we see in some other schools. So it's kind of just juggling how many classes you would have. But all of our schools have capacity for preschool and kindergarten. Yeah.
Thanks. Beth? Richard?
Thank you very much, Kim, for the presentation. It was great. I think that the piece on community leads is going to be very critical. And I would strongly urge us as a district to see what we can do to maybe grab that. Because I think that a lot of decisions are going to be made locally around all of the different multiple delivery services that we have in the district. So just saying.
I think the issue with that, Richard, is we have no idea what strings come with that. And so I agree with you, but I think it's a TBD to see what they will attach to what the community lead needs to do. My my other concern is I think that many who heard the spin around full day preschool actually thought that's what they were getting was full day preschool all week and not 10 hours. And so we're going to have, I think our hands full when we try to explain that this was a tobacco tax that was only intended for 10 hours a day. And what I worry is the pressure then to create, as I understand it, there'll be some pressure to create independent preschool districts that have could have different boundaries than our own school district and then trying to raise a mill levy to to meet the additional requirements to fund that that would then compete with our own mill levy in our own district. And so I think there's a lot of questions that still need to be answered. And I so appreciate you attending a gazillion meetings on this and keeping us informed on that. And hopefully the bill will drop soon and then we'll actually see kind of what the actual thinking is on this because there's still so many blanks to be filled in. I think we're all really excited about the prospect of offering full day preschool to our to, you know, to all the students who want to be able to attend. But there's still so much that still needs to be figured out. So thank you for all your amazing work on this. And I guess we'll just wait and see what the bill looks like. Rob?
Thanks, Kathy. I just want to take a moment to recognize Kim and all the work that she's done in our district and is doing across the state in early childhood education, a recognized leader in the state of Colorado. We're lucky to have her on our team. I think she did a great job providing the overview. And I think, Kathy, you know, what you said is so important that there's so much we still don't know. We've engaged with the Governor's Office and others to try to get some of these answers and the answers just aren't there yet. Kim, if you go to slide seven, I think it highlights the things that we're really worried about. I'm very worried that our at-risk three-year-old students will be left out in the cold and won't have the opportunity to go to preschool. That's a that's a significant issue, one that we've one that we've shared with both the Governor's Office and others. And they've said that they're they're paying attention to that. The idea of special education programming, you know, so board members, what that would mean is if I chose a parent, I choose a private provider. Then, once I get my child in preschool, the preschool realizes there's some some learning needs. Then there's an evaluation and they could end up being in a in a school that doesn't have the services that they need to serve their IEP. In which case, those students would then have to, we would have to serve those students. And either they'd have to come back to us or we'd have to figure out how to do that. That's still very fuzzy on how we're going to working through that. The funding source, when you start merging and talking about merging federal dollars with state dollars with this tax, with potentially raising local dollars, gets, I mean, it's just very, very unclear at this point. And then this local lead process, as Kathy has shared, what does that mean? Who's the local lead? You know, how do you work together within a a system of public and private providers? So I think there's a lot that we, as a governance team, need to continue to pay close attention to. I will continue to pay attention to this. This is so critical for our community, for our kids. I know Kim is going to be keeping a very close eye on this. I just want to thank our team and thank the board for caring about this. Thank our community for supporting it. And just know that we're watching. And I think that there may be, at some point, we need to really speak up and advocate for things if we see things turning in a direction that we don't feel like are in the best interest of our of our school district and our kids and our community.
So what you say, Rob, about some students with special needs going to a private school and then this private preschool provider realizing that they may not have the ability to serve that student is not hypothetical. That's actually happened, hasn't it, Kim?
Yes, it does. Yeah.
So we've we've experienced that. So we're not just like crying wolf when we say that's a that's a real concern that we have. And what I'd like to propose to the board is what we did last year with the discipline bill is that once this drops, we may need to have one or two board meetings, maybe over the lunch hour, where Kim and others, probably Bill and others, could present to us so that we could get a sense of this. Because I think it's going to go on a pretty fast track. So we'll just have to see, but I thought that process worked pretty well last year around the discipline bill. So are we, and we may not need to, we may be able to do it at a regular board meeting. But to the extent that there needs to be quick turnaround or, you know, an in-depth analysis of that, I think we should keep that in our back pocket as a way to look at it. Does that work for you, Rob?
Yeah, I think that we'll need to prepare to do that in the event that something happens that is not in alignment with the with the what we what we hear is going to be in that bill. It just, there's a lot of moving parts. And I understand that folks are trying to trying to string this together as they stand up a new department, as they stand up new rules and trying to merge both private and and school district partners around this. And so just a lot of moving parts. I just think that we'll have to be quick to act and look. And if there's something that we feel like isn't in alignment, that that we'll just need to probably circle up and and figure out what what our next steps would be.
Thanks again, Kim, and to your whole staff. We really appreciate all your hard work and this will be really exciting. It's just we have a lot of road in front of us till we get to the finish line, I think.
I was just going to say, this is the biggest thing that's happened in early childhood since 1992, if you think about it, with the Act, with CPP being implemented. So it's pretty big.
Anything else, board members? Okay. We're going to move on to our next information item, which is Resolution 22-06, the 10th anniversary of the Board Policy Action to Support Transgender Students. And first, what I'd like to do is invite Jenna Clinchard to speak. And I'm hoping she is logged on. I'll let Jenna introduce herself.
Hi, I am.
Awesome. Welcome, Jenna. Thank you for joining us. We really appreciate it.
Thanks for having me and thanks for inviting me to this celebration. It is something that I am very, very grateful for. And it is nice to see everyone tonight. Some of you know my story, but others of you don't. And I want to share a little bit tonight of why Resolution Number 22-06 is so important to me and to my family. March 26th of 2015, my nine-year-old child told me that she felt more like a girl than a boy. And in our family, if something is going on in our family, we jump into action to support our kids the best way we know how. And that required a lot of research. best way we know how. And that required a lot of research as we navigated this transition for our daughter. And intuitively, I knew I needed to educate myself. And going through that process of educating myself, I learned a lot about transgender humans. And I also learned how cool life can be for transgender humans. And that potentially, that could happen to my child. And that was reality for me. And that frightened me beyond belief, some of the stories that I read. And so we were not living, my family and I were not living in a place that was safe when our nine-year-old transitioned. And we knew we had to move. And we are fortunate and privileged enough with our jobs that we were able to make a move. And I thought we were going to have to move to one of the coasts. And I thought, that's it, we're going to have to pick up, go to West Coast, go to the East Coast. And then, as I was researching, I found Boulder. And I remember, oh, yeah, Boulder. And then I found something even better. I found Resolution Number 22-06, that BVSD had a policy that they had approved in their school district to protect transgender youth. And I read that, and I cried for about 15 minutes. And I just sat there, and there were tears of gratitude, because in that moment, I had hope. I had hope that she would be protected and she would be safe when she went to school. And that there was hope that she might not get bullied and beat up for just living as her true self. And it really felt like a miracle, because for a family, it is a family when a child transitions. And so it affects the whole family. And how, you know, the number one thing with a transgender child is how do we keep them safe? So I thought, maybe I don't have to worry anymore. And then we came up and we met with an elementary school principal who was way beyond her time. And she had bathrooms that were non-gender. And that gave me more hope. And I met more families. That year in 2015, I don't even know if the district knows this, but I know at least six families that moved from other states specifically for Resolution Number 22-06, because people knew that we can move here and we could keep our transgender kiddos safe. You know, my kiddo's been in three schools, elementary school, middle school, and high school. And she has been welcomed, and she has been loved by the administration and by the teachers. And she has been accepted. When she was bullied by, oh, my gosh, when she was bullied by a substitute teacher, she was able to use her voice. She was able to go and talk with someone in the school office, and it was remedied. Instead of being told, you know, oh, just go back to class, she was heard. And I believe that's because of Resolution Number 22-06. And, you know, I think for a lot of times, I was thinking about it, policies can just seem like words, right? Like, sometimes we, and sometimes policies are words. But I can tell you, this policy is not just words. It is put into action. And I've seen it be put into action since I've lived here since 2015. I know that I can reach out to BVSD Board. I know I can reach out to Rob. I know I can reach out to our daughter's school. And I'm heard. And I'm not just heard, but action is taken. And so tonight, you know, I want to, what's really touched my heart since 2015 is, I've watched Rob and the board take on adult bullies that wanted to silence my child and all transgender youth in our district. And the answer from the board and from Rob was a resounding, no. You will not silence these children and make them feel alone. They will be seen, and they will be heard, and we will protect them. And so tonight, I want to thank you, the board. I want to thank Rob for affirming this policy and continuing this policy and recognizing all youth, and that all youth deserve to be treated equally. I want to, I mean, I know we still have work to do for LGBTQ youth in schools. I recognize that. But tonight, I just want to celebrate with you this transformative policy that has gone nationwide, and will continue to allow our transgender youth to be safe in schools and enable them to thrive academically and socially. So thank you all. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. I continue to, I look forward to continuing this work with every single one of you. And thank you for hearing me and taking action.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenna. Your advocacy has made a difference, not just in our district. I don't know if you can see that there are very many dry eyes up here right now, but your advocacy has made a big difference, not just in our district, but statewide. I remember your advocacy at the Capitol. And so thank you so much for stepping up and for sharing your journey with us. So we also, as part of this celebration, we asked Bethy Leonardi and Sarah Staley, I think I have her last name right, to put together a video of the impact that this policy has had from a queer endeavor. And I'm hoping that we can get that queued up and share that with everybody. Bethy had exactly two days to put this together, because she came up with the idea on a Friday, and she worked all weekend and has given us this video. So please join me in watching the video. Hold on a second. We need to get the volume.
Trans students contribute to the vibrancy of our communities in countless ways. I see it every day, in classrooms, in the library, in the lunchroom, on sports teams. And in order for students to be able to contribute, it has to be safe for them to be in.
In 2012, Boulder Valley School District adopted guidelines for supporting transgender and gender nonconforming youth. The district's move to support trans youth with that affirming policy was exceptional. Since then, the conversation about the rights of trans youth and what they deserve in schools has grown. In 2016, the Departments of Justice and Education released a Dear Colleague Letter to Guide Schools in Their Efforts to Support Trans Youth. That guidance was rescinded in 2017 and reinstated in 2021. In the political struggle over trans students' rights to equal educational opportunities, BVSD has remained strong and steady in its commitment.
The first way that BVSD's guidelines have been really important to me is in that it has helped me to support multiple families and their students to negotiate and navigate things like Infinite Campus, how to change their students' names and pronouns, so that their students can be seen and affirmed appropriately in their classes.
Teacher and administrative advocates at our school have relied on the guidelines to support trans students through the creation of all-gender bathrooms.
The guidelines have really supported me over the years, because I know that I have the backing of my administration and of my district to really support children who come through my doors.
I think the BVSD guidelines for supporting trans students are hugely important, because they both provide a practical guideline of the logistics of supporting our trans students in the baseline ways. They also send a symbolic message to our students, faculty, our communities, our families, that say, trans people are an important and valued part of our communities.
Too often, schools are spaces that limit trans students' opportunities to thrive. And right now, lawmakers across the country are advancing dangerous legislative policies and proposals that limit the rights of transgender people. In 2021, more than 280 anti-LGBTQ-plus bills were introduced in 33 state legislatures across the nation. More than 130 of those bills were specifically anti-trans. They take aim at the rights and opportunities advanced by the guidelines, and they create unwelcoming, hostile environments at schools, one place where students should feel safe and supported.
When I think about kind of bottom line with teaching, what teaching can provide when we do it well, is a safe environment for kids, where they feel recognized, and they get to take score and be part of the community with our children.
At Emerald, we've been able to support numerous students through a transition or just in being who their very best self is.
The number of students identifying as non-binary and/or using they/them pronouns has increased exponentially important to our students and to us as educators.
As a public school district, we take seriously a responsibility to support all students. While policies like the guidelines are not a perfect solution for transforming the culture and climate of schools, they provide crucial guidance and legal ground to stand on so that educators can create schools and classrooms that are safe and affirming of all students.
One of the things I've really been thinking a lot about is how to continue to grow and change and learn as an educator. I think it's really easy to get stuck in what you do and not kind of keep up with the times.
These guidelines have really helped me to support my faculty at the school that I worked for 18 years, in providing them with support, guidance, professional development on how really to utilize those guidelines in order to best benefit their students. Simple things like how to leave subplans, right, so that the names in IC coordinate with the names that kids want to be called, so that when substitutes come into the room, there's never an awkward or uncomfortable, a misgendering of students when teachers don't know who they are.
I remember when I first came to BVSD years ago, before this policy, we had a student who was transitioning at our middle school. And so many questions for us around names and pronouns and locker rooms and bathroom use. And I'm sure we made a million mistakes, but through the grace of this student and their family, learned a lot. And just like then, now, I'm sure it's our young people who are teaching us.
My favorite story is, we had the guidelines, we've been working with students, and we said, okay, we're going to have to spend a couple of days. What do you think for the timeline? And the student said, I want to do it today. And we were actually able, with the wonderful guidelines and all of the training that we have in BVSD, to make that happen for that student, who is now flourishing as a high schooler.
These guidelines are one reason why I, as a trans teacher, choose to work at BVSD. Without these guidelines, it would be really challenging for me to envision my own safety and happiness and community and support in a school setting.
Thanks to the Board of Directors and BVSD for taking a clear stand in support of trans and gender expansive young people.
Boulder Valley School District is more committed than ever to continuing its work to be more equitable and inclusive. We are proud of the long history we have supporting transgender students, as well as educators in our district to do the work involved to create schools and classrooms that honor all students.
All right, thanks.
If you all could go ahead and pause the video.
So this is just on as an information item, and it's short. So I'm just going to read our foreword as this clause, and then we can move on to the next. So this is, this is School District, Boulder Valley School District RE2 Resolution Number 22-06, reaffirming the Board's commitment to support all students. Whereas in 2012, the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education adopted policies extending protections from discrimination and harassment, and establishing policies to support transgender students and employees. Whereas these policies became national models for school districts seeking to create safe schools for all students. Whereas the Boulder Valley School District community advocated for and supported the Board's action in 2012, and continues to collaborate with the Board and school district to create equitable schools that empower all students to succeed. And whereas the Board of Education continues to improve its policies and practices to support transgender students and employees. Now therefore be it resolved that, in recognition of the 10-year anniversary of the Board's action, the Board of Education reaffirms its commitment to working with students, employees, and community members to continue to improve the school district's policy, systems, and supports for transgender students into creating equitable learning environments that enable all children to thrive. So I just want to say thanks to all the partners who stepped up tonight to help us, because, as we said, this is an ongoing process. And without the advocacy and the stepping up of, you know, our partners like Bethy and Sarah and Jenna, I don't think we'd be where we are today, but we still have a long way to go. So I look forward to our continued partnership. And again, thanks to everybody for making this celebration happen tonight. Any comments from anybody? Lisa?
Thanks, Kathy. First, I wanted to say thank you to Jenna. That was incredibly moving. I'm sorry if my voice cracks. I used a dirty napkin to dry my tears. And thank you for that video. It was great. When we talk about what it means to recognize and support our trans students, being seen and accepted is the bedrock for everything that happens in our schools. Confidence is key to learning success, and I'm so proud to be part of a school district that recognizes the value of each of our students. Our schools should be places where each student can exist as they are, can speak their truth and be celebrated. This is how we raise strong, confident, capable people who can innovate and change the world. Transgender youth experience homelessness at a much higher rate than their peers. They experience abuse and bullying at a much higher rate than their peers. And they experience suicidal ideation at a much higher rate than their peers. And we can make a dent in all of that with policies like this and with the work we do. Finally, I just want to say that trans activists, so many of whom are folks who never wanted to be activists, but who had to fight for their right to exist, they have fought hard to simply be seen, to be treated with the same basic rights we all enjoy. And I'm thankful for all they've done to get us where we are today. And I look forward to a day when a celebration like the one we're having here today happens in state and school buildings across the world, and where we celebrate trans figures and achievements as a matter of expected course. So thanks to Rob, thanks to our former board, and thanks Kathy for bringing this today, and to everybody who made this initial resolution possible, and to everyone who continues to affirm. affirm it.
Thanks, Lisa. Anyone else? Oh, Kitty?
Hi. Jenna, thank you so much for speaking with us. And I know Jude decided not to speak with us today, which is perfectly fine. But many folks will remember the times Jude has spoken to us as a courageous young middle schooler, and the times when we've heard about Jude's testimony in the state legislature, and even you and Jude standing up to a legislator who refused to acknowledge that she was your daughter and called her your son. I'm so proud to be part of a district that is celebrating 10 years of this, not just coming to the table now. And yeah, Jenna, I was crying too. So I'm just so proud. And I know we still have work to do, but I am glad that we are a place where people can move from out of state knowing that their children will be respected and will be treated just like all other children. Thanks.
Anyone else? I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank our former board president, Tina Marquess, who was the one who actually brought this to our attention and was a steadfast advocate for our trans youth and for our equity policies. So heartfelt thanks to Tina as well. So I think that's all for this information item. We're going to move on to the legislative update. Rob, do you have anything? I think we talked about the big bill that's kind of looming, which is the preschool bill. So I think we'll wait on any other legislative updates. The one thing I did learn that was somewhat daunting is that there are approximately 40 bills that have yet to drop on how to spend the federal stimulus money. And we're already at the end of February. So you can only imagine what it's going to be like between now and the end of the session. And we are constitutionally bound to end in early May. So it's going to be a wild ride. But for now, I think it's still not so wild. So I think we should just move on to action items, consent grouping, unless anyone needs a break. Are we all good? All right. Going to move on to the consent grouping. 7.1 Personnel Items, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, February 7, 2022, Special Meeting, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, February 8, 2022, Regular Meeting, 7.4 Approval of Minutes, February 15, 2022, Special Meeting, 7.5 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, the CAFR and Single Audit Report, 7.6 The Acceptance of Donation, Douglas Elementary, 7.7 Approval of the 2022-2023 Proposed Fees, 7.8 Resolution 20-22-06, 10th Anniversary of Board Policy Action to Support Transgender Students, 7.9 Grant Business Services Projects Serve U.S. Department of Education 22, 7.10 Grant Community Schools' Childcare Stabilization and Workforce Sustainability Grant, Colorado Office of Early Childhood Education, 7.11 Grant Early Childhood Education and Childcare Stabilization and Workforce Sustainability Grant, Colorado Office of Early Childhood Education, 7.12 Grant Student Services Emergency Counselor Funding, Colorado Department of Education, and 7.13 Grant Transportation Alternative Fuel Vehicles Regional Air Quality Council. Are there any items Board members would like to pull from the consent grouping?
I have a question about 7.7 on fees. And then a tiny question on our transportation grant.
So do you want to pull them, or do you want to just have discussion on those?
On the grant, just a discussion. On the fees?
It's fine if you want to pull it, and we can have a conversation. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So we're going to pull 7.7. But for the rest, go ahead with your question, Nicole.
I was just curious, where are our new EV charging stations? We're going to go with that grant, said three EV charging stations. I was just curious if we had thoughts on where.
Good timing, Rob Price has left the building. Can we get back to you on that when he comes back in?
Yeah, not a big deal, just curiosity.
Any other discussion on the consent grouping minus 7.7? Do we have a motion to approve?
A point of order.
Oh, here he is. Okay, one second. Rob, can you answer Nicole's question?
Sorry, I stepped out of the room. I apologize.
I just had a question, the grant, the transportation grant for electric buses, and there were some EV charging stations. I was wondering if we had an idea of where those might be going.
They will go at the Lafayette Terminal and at the Boulder Terminal.
So at the bus terminal? Okay.
Yep, yep, for the buses.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rob. Kitty?
I just had a point of order that we should have had a motion on the floor before discussion.
You're correct. But now we'll have a motion? Stacy moves. Beth seconds. Laura, can you call the roll, please?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Ziss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So we'll now turn to 7.7 and your question on the fees.
So I had a question around athletic fees. Looking at our budget, we are not collecting as many of those fees as we have historically. And we spent a chunk of our general fund budget on our athletics. And I was just wondering, as a new board member, fees overall, how are they determined, aside from assigning them in board policy? And when and how are they revisited? So that's my main question. And then a secondary question, as a parent of a child who acquires academic fees, the it's confusing because in Infinite Campus, there's a fee spot that doesn't populate with the actual course fees. You have to go to RevTrack. And so often I get a late notice on a fee. So kind of curious, like, is there a systematic problem that might be contributing to some of the non-fee payments? So just a couple of questions about how we establish fees, how we collect fees, and how we consider those as a board, just as a new board member.
Good evening. So in terms of how we establish fees, those are proposed by someone typically from the school, sometimes from one of the central office departments that might be originating the fee. And then that's brought forward to the Academic Services Department, which takes it to the school leadership and executive team. And if they think it's worth passing on to you, then it comes to the Board for approval.
And are those relative to other districts, or?
That's a good question, and I would have to do some more research on that to be able to answer that accurately. I will say that the fees that are proposed for this year are all for CTE courses and for Chromebooks, both of which are areas where we're just seeing a tremendous amount of inflation in the cost of consumable supplies for those areas.
Thanks. Stacy?
This seems like a lot of fees. And I just, and I know that when someone can't afford to pay for the fees, it's taken care of. I understand that. But honestly, what would it take to get rid of some of these fees? I know it takes money, but it's always kind of bothered me. And then this year, when I was looking, when I was looking over this before in preparation of this meeting, I was just taken with how many fees there are. And I know I'm not really asking a question, but I don't know if Bill has ever looked at fees and said, "If we had this much extra money, we wouldn't have to have fees." I don't know. I just find it kind of alarming. It's just a comment.
Thank you.
Do we know how much we collect in fees?
I wouldn't know that. Bill, would you know?
Yes.
And?
Not off the top of my head.
We're happy to get back to the Board, and we can continue this discussion to the extent that, you know, how much are we collecting in fees? I think the other question that I heard is, what are our fees relative to other districts? Nicole asked a question in regards to Infinite Campus and RevTrack not syncing up, which potentially ends up in fees not being paid because folks don't know.
Sure.
It was blinking green. I've never seen that before. When every year more added, are, do ever, they come off the list? Like that you don't need the fee anymore?
That is a theoretical possibility. I don't know if I've seen one come off the list. I have seen the fees do get changed from year to year. So not all the ones that are on the list are necessarily new fees. They may just be changes in existing fees because we always bring those to the Board as well.
Yep. Okay. All right. Thanks, Sam.
Lisa?
Thanks, Stacy. I think you're right that we talked about this last year and maybe the year before, and I'm glad you brought it up again. I think when we talk about affordable, I'll talk about myself, and I know I'm representative of several families in the district. I don't qualify for any kind of assistance, and even if that's not the process we use for things like this, it always feels a bit uncomfortable to ask when I know I make more than maybe I should when I ask. But having said that, half my income goes to housing, and it's difficult to do things like put my kids in soccer camp. So when we talk about these fees and if we're looking at reassessing them, I would love us to think about what affordable means in a city where our average home price is, I think, now up to $1.8 million, and whether we could do anything to make sure that kids have access to all the opportunities available to them, regardless of whether or not their parents can spend an extra 500 bucks a quarter to make sure it happens.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Board, but I sense an agenda item here. So do we need to pass this now to keep moving? And then can we bring it back as an agenda item? I'm just wondering what the timing is if we postpone this till our next board meeting? Would that be enough time, Rob? I'm just?
I'm looking at Sam. This decision happens now, so as we, as kids start to sign up for courses, then they know and understand the fees associated with the courses, right? So there's a potential, if this is not approved, right? Then we would have to go with the old fee structure until the new fee structure is approved, right? Which would then eliminate a lot of the, what it looks like to me, and Board members, if you go into the item, those items that are in red are the new fees because they're for new classes.
Some of them are new classes. Some of them are existing classes where we're just changing the fee because of inflation in the costs associated with it.
So it sounds to me, Board members, like we're looking for a deeper conversation around fees, what's an appropriate level of fees, doing some research. I think that that's just going to take some time, right? I'd ask the Board to consider the fees that are on the agenda this evening with a commitment that we will take a deeper dive into where fees are and have a deeper conversation as we start to think into next year on what that might look like. But if the Board wants to stop and pause, you know, we'll do what we can to think about what we would need to do. It's just, I worry that we just are up against a, up against kind of a time crunch here.
Nicole?
I was just going to say, then I would move that we approve item 7.7 and add a larger discussion of fees to our agenda at a later date.
Seconded by Beth. Any other discussion on this? Go ahead, Stacy.
Just a point of order, I guess. We could have had this discussion without pulling it, correct? We could have just approved it or did what we did with the other one. I'm just wondering.
Well, I think we weren't sure whether we were going to pass it or not, so I think that's why it got pulled. We needed additional information.
So that's, so for our new board members, because I can remember maybe two other times in two years that we pulled anything. If you pull it, then you're considering not voting for it, correct? Okay. I just want to make sure, because we don't do that a lot.
But it may just be you need additional information before you can decide if you're going to vote for or against it.
Or if you know you're going to vote for it, you could just discuss it and not pull it.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
That's how I understand it. Is that at least a common understanding on the, okay. All right. So can, any other discussion on 7.7? So Laura, can you call the roll, please?
Okay. The motion is to approve the 2022-2023 proposed fees. Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Ziss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, Rob, what would be the best way to figure out how to calendar this? Because it sounds like we're going to, do we need an RFI? Do we need to talk about it, agenda setting? What would you suggest so that we give staff enough time but that we bring it back in a timely way?
I think that I have the direction that I need from the Board. I think that I saw a general nodding of heads around the idea of, let's dig into this topic a little bit more, right? The idea of how these fees can potentially impact ability, the ability for a child or a family to participate in things would conflict with our beliefs around equity. And also, the idea of what are our fees in comparison to other districts like districts? So I think I have enough. What I would ask is that I get with our, with our team, do an initial kind of look at the fees, maybe do some initial analysis, and then share that with the Board. And I can do that either through written communication, or we could bring that back. We could look for time in our agenda. Our agenda's pretty packed this semester. But again, this wouldn't be coming back to the Board until next January-ish. So even if we got this to the fall, we would have enough time, I think, to figure out what we would need to do. And then use that and understand that. Because if we, if we need the materials and we don't charge the fees, then we have to allocate the budget. And that's the reality. It's not just, do we charge the fees or not? It's, do we continue to charge the fees or do we stop charging the fees and then take those recurring dollars from somewhere else in the budget and allocate them towards the fees? So I think that it might take me a little bit of time. I don't know that we, let me, let me take it back to our team, and then, and then we can bring it back to you all and kind of think about a path forward.
It seems like maybe a work session downstream would be a good way to, at least part of a work session on this. So, thanks, Rob. Is that okay with everybody on the Board? Kitty, you okay with that? Okay. All right. We have one more action item, which is the Board member appointment to the Audit Committee. I believe that Board member is Beth. And so do I have a nomination to appoint Beth to the Audit Committee?
I would love to nominate Beth.
Nominated by Lisa. Is there a second? Second by Stacy or Nicole. Laura, can you call the roll, please?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Ziss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks, Beth, for stepping up to do that. Appreciate it. So the next study item is the process for developing the land acknowledgement. And the reason that this is on the agenda is it came up during our prioritization meeting, and we all agreed that we want to figure out some way to do an acknowledgement of the land acknowledgement that, I know that there's been one by CU. So there's two steps or three steps that I can see, and this is just to figure out our process right now. One is, what do we say? And how do we develop that? And how do we get community engagement around developing that? Because I think we could come up with something, but it would feel like it would be better to have some community process for that. And then, once we come up with what is it we say, kind of alongside that is, when do we say it and how often do we need to say it? And so I see this as kind of a process, but I'm really excited that we brought this forward during our prioritization. And so I just kind of open it up for comments or questions so that we can kind of, as a Board, figure out what our process is going to be going forward on this. So any comments or questions? Lisa?
In terms of the process, I think that's a little more complicated. I, I think certainly we would want to welcome comment from the community. I also think we could end up with a Too Many Cook situation. And there's a lot of great templates out there that we could use to get this going. But really, I wanted to speak to the timing. I think it's my hope that this might be something we would do at the beginning of each regular board meeting and that the, the length of the acknowledgement we choose would be something that would, would allow that to occur in a way that felt comfortable and natural.
So what would you propose? I'm struggling with how we get the community feedback. Do we make it?
Why don't, what, what if we get something written up and maybe post it on social media and on a website and, you know, give two or three weeks for folks to submit any thoughts or comments they have? We can make sure that it is sent out to all members of the Equity Council as well as to our community partners who we know do work around these things and that everyone has a chance to get their eyes on it. And if folks send in comments, we can take the time to figure out how to incorporate those thoughtfully.
The, the land acknowledgement that I pulled is the one that CU uses and it's a page long. So I would think we'd need something shorter than that if we're going to be doing it frequently. So. Nicole?
I guess I would also propose that our 80-plus students that identify as indigenous or Native Indian, Alaskan, Native, we do specifically ask for their input or communities from our indigenous peoples directly because that, that ultimately is who we are acknowledging this for and what would be meaningful for them as far as what, where, when this is used. And also thinking about, I, I'm struggling a little bit with, it's one thing to say something, but how does this translate to actionable, actionable change? Or how are we, how does this directly impact opportunities and experiences and outcomes for our students? And so making sure we're thoughtful on connecting those dots back to, back to kids, which is why we're here. So hearing from that community, I think, is, is very important for me on this issue.
Richard?
I agree with you, Nicole. I think we should start really with the Native Americans that we have here in the district. We do have the, the Indian folks already here. So I think we should start with them because they do have an advisory council. And we should start with them and, and then move it, you know, to other community groups and stuff like that. But I think that's where it should start. And then I think we really need to be really focusing on what else can we do to support our Native American students in our district? And I was looking at the single audit. We're, what, $19,000 we get from the feds? You all saw that. And I'm not sure what we're doing in, in regards to our own general fund to support our Native American students. But you're right, we should start there.
But are we going to start there with something that we propose as language so that they have something to edit? I think that's better than just sending them an email and say, fill in the, okay. So.
The, the land acknowledgement, I think a lot of them already, the statement is there and that a lot of people use already. And if I look at the New Vista land acknowledgement that they have in their website, it's, it really is similar to a lot of land acknowledgements that I've heard from other communities.
Rob?
I'd like to propose that, that I take this to staff to, to propose a process for us to follow, given, given the fact that I think it would be staff that would be leading any coordination between students, coordinated efforts, you know, coordinating with partners. So if, if you'll give me an opportunity, let me take this back to staff, come up with a proposed process, right? Because I think the process is important, right? On what and how you, you decide to, what is said and why it's said? I think that the process, when you develop something like this is important. And so I'd like to take this back to our team, propose a process for the board. You can review that. And that way you have something to kind of look at and say yes, no. And then after, after we get approval on the process, we can go forward and get to work on, on, on what we need to do to get, get the board what they're looking for, which is, which, which is a land acknowledgement that is, that honors our students, our indigenous students, and, and, and connects with the partners that know how to advise us and should be involved in something like this.
And what I would ask, Rob, is that, for example, Richard, if you know what the New Vista is, or you have any ideas of language that you've seen, that we send it to Rob so that we can get that process started? Just getting the language kind of in the queue. Does that make sense, Rob?
Let me start with a proposed process, which that might be part of the process, which should be gathering current language. I just, I just want the space to talk to our team on what that might look like. And, and then we can engage individual board members on, on thoughts and ideas as we move forward as part of the process.
And I would.
Richard?
I would add that we should include some of the Native American elders that we do have in our community. We have plenty of them in our community. And even reach out, because we do have two reservations here in Colorado. You have the Southern Yute Reservation. You also have the Mountain Yute Reservation up in Durango and Cortez. And I know that in past, when some of the, our teachers were doing some work around Native American culture, et cetera, they would bring in elders. And they would actually sit in a classroom and talk with our, our kids and stuff like that. But I think it would be respectful for us to reach out to our Native American elders in terms of them also helping us with, with this process.
So I think that's just part of what staff, I'm sure they've heard the conversation tonight that Rob will take to them and they'll make sure they're included as part of our process. So anything else about the process for the land acknowledgement? Rob, do you have enough direction from us? Okay. Richard?
Just one more. How long is this going to take? In terms of the process and actually getting something done?
Not sure. I think that we need to go to staff. We need to think about a thoughtful process. And then we can propose that process to the board. And then the board can decide, no shrink this, eliminate this, we want this, right? If you have a timeline in regards to the, the outcome you're trying to get to, right? Then that will certainly impact the process. I, I think that, that the direction I'm hearing is try to get the process right. So once we have a land acknowledgement, it's something that we can feel confident about and recognize and honors our community, the indigenous community. I'm not looking to drag this out, but I also don't want to skip steps. I think that that's really important. So I'll propose a process to the board and you all can decide what you want to do with that. I just feel like staff coming in, considering we are going to be shouldering some of this work in regards to the, you know, the more folks that we engage, that's staff work. And so we just have to, I have to get with our team and understand what that's going to, going to look like. And unless you all want to give me a date today when you want to have this by, which then would impact the work that I would do with staff.
No, I think we've made it clear, this, we brought it up during prioritization, so it's a priority of the board. And you'll weave it into the work as you can and, and we'll get it done as soon as we can. I think it's important first step that we have as making it a board priority. And so thanks, Rob, for taking the load of trying to get us to the next step on that. Anything else on this, on this topic? So the next study item is agenda setting. I think we've come up with one agenda item, which is the study of the fees. But fortunately, that has kind of a long runway on it since we have approved the fees for tonight. And we'll also have an agenda item on the process for developing the land acknowledgement at some point. Are there any other agenda items that board members want to raise for tonight?
When are we going to talk about the use of pronouns? I know that we, I brought it up at the prioritizing and I'm not sure where we ended up with that.
Rob?
I believe that's when we were, we were reviewing board policy, B E, D C, C D?
We have that on March 8th.
March 8th, yep.
I am working on getting our name placards updated. It's just, I have to order some materials for it.
And Laura, just, to all board members, let's make sure that we send out again, the link again this Friday on our board prioritization that we have electronically, so all board members know and understand what's coming when.
I thought that we had agreed to get new nameplates, that I think it was Kathleen was going to send a, a signature line for our email that included the open records thing and how we should put our pronouns. So I thought that we talked about all of that and those were actionable items that we were going to do already.
And the change on their website under our name as well. And I agree, I thought we did approve those.
Because I, I thought that we discussed that we would not, every single time that we speak, say our pronouns because we're not introducing ourselves. We're acting, we're doing business. I, I thought that it was kind of closed. I thought we came to a consensus about what we were going to do. That was my impression.
The, the meeting I was referring to, March 8th, is when we're talking about all of the board procedures, right? And so pledge of allegiance, anything that's already in policy that would need to be adjusted based on the feedback from our prioritization. So to that point, Stacy, as we spoke about the use of pronouns, we did agree upon the nameplate, we did agree upon those other things. Richard, was there something else that you, you had thought we had agreed upon that, that we were waiting on besides those items?
No, thank you for the refresher because I kind of spaced it out a little bit and I'm just asking the question because I thought that by now we would have, nameplates already, no fault on you, Laura, but I'm anxious that we get something done, especially after hearing the trans, transgender celebration and all of that, where, where we, we need to model also that we do respect and support our transgender LGBTQ community. And using pronouns, I think, is when we have done it.
So you're good, Richard, on, okay. Anything else for the good of the order? I want to thank Kristen for showing up tonight for Kathleen and, and seeing us through the meeting, making sure we don't go off the, the rails too much. So thank you for being here. It's always a comfort to look over there and see you sitting there, so I appreciate it. Anything else? All right. This meeting is adjourned.